To start recording when you are. Hello and welcome to the candidate forum for the city of Hugo, City Council. I am Diane Doll and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the White Bear Lake area from outside of Hugo. I will be your moderator today. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voters' rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidates or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on the ballot on November 5th. All candidates who filed to run for this position were invited to participate. Today, we have Philip Klein and Benjamin Krull with us. To begin, each candidate will introduce themselves by name and make an opening statement of up to one minute. After that, we'll take the questions and I will change the order a bit to keep it more fair. It's not a lot of change required with two participants. The answers will be of one-minute duration. Our timekeeper will show a warning sign of 13 and 15 seconds and then a stop sign. At the time of the stop, you may finish your sentence, but then we need to be firm about stopping. Okay, so for the opening statement, candidates will respond in alphabetical order and it's just barely candidate Klein comes ahead of candidate Krull in alphabetical order. Thereafter, the speaking will be rotated. You have one minute to respond to each question. Candidates, you do not have to use the full minute. You can just say what you have to say and be done, and that will allow time for more questions, although I don't think we'll have any difficulty. We have 10 questions to candidates. We can take up to an hour, so I think we won't have a time issue. Each candidate can have three opportunities to clarify information or to rebut the other candidate's responses. Each rebuttal is limited to 30 seconds, and a candidate may use only one rebuttal for each question. When the questions are finished, then the candidates will have one minute for their closing statement, and that will be in the reverse order. The questions were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a committee of League of Women Voters members. We will not use questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature. We may consolidate questions that fall in the same general topic area. All questions submitted are the property of the League of Women Voters. All right, so let's get started with our opening statements, and candidate Klein, you will be first.
Thank you, Diane. Yeah, my name is Phil Klein. I'm running for Hugo City Council, Ward 2. And I find there's three priorities that are most important to me in the city of Hugo right now. That's water. We've got to be able to control our access and our ability to control our water, how we want to use it, when we want to use it, and where. Secondly is the housing. We're continuing to grow as a community. We need to continue to work with property owners and developers to try to develop a wide variety of housing for individuals to fit their income needs and also to attract more business. And then thirdly is the financial responsiveness to our community, making certain that we stay within our taxes, stay available to individuals that they can pay for them, and that we can still maintain a good financial structure within our community.
Thank you. Candidate Krull.
Yes, thank you, Diane. Hello, my name is Ben Krull. My family and I have lived in Hugo for 10 years. I have a mechanical engineering degree from the University of Minnesota and spent the bulk of my career in nuclear power, first as an engineer and finishing as a federally licensed senior reactor operator. Through my two years of training and 10 years operating the reactor, I am familiar with regulations and rulemaking. I also have experience as a property manager and have worked with several metro area cities on housing ordinances, inspections, and solving problems. I did volunteer with the Minneapolis Salvation Army at their Harbor Light Center. The Harbor Light Center is Minnesota's largest homeless shelter. The advisory council is made up of community members, politicians, Harbor Light staff, and previous residents of the Harbor Light. Through this volunteer experience, I am familiar with voting with a diverse group of people holding strong opinions on how problems should be solved. Most recently, I've been a stay-at-home dad caring for my two sons. With my youngest son now in full-day school, I have time to dedicate to public service as a city councilman.
Thank you. Okay, for question number one, you will be first, Mr. Krull. In your opinion, what are the top three issues facing Hugo and what is your plan to address these issues?
Thank you, Diane. I have made some literature where I talk about this. The top three issues for Hugo, the main one is being transparency in government and the government process. My plan for addressing this is three steps. I plan to do monthly constituent meetings. I plan to do summary videos of council meeting, letting people know what was discussed and what was decided, and I plan to do a monthly newsletter of the same that I can get people to sign up for. The second one is business growth. I've lived in Hugo for 10 years and we've seen very little business growth. In fact, preparing for this, I looked at a 2012 League of Women Voters roundtable, and we were talking about business growth. Here we are 12 years later and we're still talking about it. And the third one is public safety and some traffic issues on Frenchman. I'd like to get some studies done to see how we can make that road more accessible and safer for the populace. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Yes, the three top priorities that you just mentioned, and Ben had mentioned that, he talks about transparency, really, we are transparent. The city of Hugo does, during the city council meetings, we do allow, well, as I said, we do have videos that are available. You can watch a live stream, or you can go back later to the website and you can look that up as we're talking at the meeting. We also, during the meeting, we allow folks to want to speak, they have the ability to do so every council meeting. We can do it at the time of the agenda was being chosen. We can do it then or during the consent agenda, they can do it at that time as well. We also, excuse me, it's for business growth, we do have business growth in the community. Schweeters has doubled the size of their growth. Xcel Energy has doubled their size of their training center. We've seen a new, as a matter of fact, just opened now a new child care center, and we have other businesses that are growing internally that you don't see outside. And then Frenchman Road, that's not our problem. That's, well, I should say it's not our problem, we're working with Lino Lakes because that's their area, that's their jurisdiction, not ours.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to question number two then, and Mr. Klein, you'll be first. How would you approach working with the mayor and other council members who may not share your outlook on controversial or complicated issues? How would you deal with supporting decisions you do not agree with?
Well, I've been on the council for 16 years, and we've ran into these issues before. We have a constructive debate in open and transparent meetings, and we allow people, I should say allow people, allow residents to come in and make their ideas known, comments known, and we take that and we work with each other and try to come to some type of consensus. We don't argue and bicker about it. We make a decision, we go forward with it. Even though I may not agree, I do agree with the, it's a democratic situation where, you know, the majority rules, and I back that decision full-heartedly. We have to work together as a group to be, to show cohesiveness, and that has, in my opinion, has really worked well for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Krull.
Yes. As far as working together with diverse opinions, I have done that on the Harbor Light Council. The main thing to do is to understand that everybody who's dedicated themselves to city government, dedicated themselves to public service, has the best interest of Hugo in mind. We might have different opinions about how we're going to get there, but we're all working to make Hugo better. If you come at it from that standpoint, it helps it be less contentious, you can work together better. I'm for big tent. I want to get as many voices in the room as possible, and that will help us come to a better consensus. If we can get a majority of people behind something, it's easier to support.
Thank you. Okay, you'll be first, Mr. Krull, for question three. What ideas do you have for improving the retail and commercial infrastructure to support the home development and increased population in Hugo?
As far as retail goes, I understand we have had things come into town, we've also had things leave. We lost our Health East associated, I moved over to Lino Lakes. At the same time, we've seen a big buildup on the west side of Elmcrest over in Lino Lakes. My main plan is posted on my website, I want to engage with Jeff Reinhardt, the previous mayor of Lino Lakes, and some other former city councilmen of Lino Lakes, and understand how they got this retail business development in their town when we've been unable to do that in Hugo.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Yeah, when it comes to business development, we're maintaining our infrastructure. We have the Highway 61 vision study right now that's going on with the Washington County, and as, once that gets developed, we're going to see possibly more increase in business attraction. Also, along highway, Elmcrest is a cutoff for Hugo. That's where the boundary's at, and that's Lino Lakes. And we've been working with Lino Lakes for years to help them develop, have them develop Elmcrest Avenue area, and we don't tell them, or they don't, we don't tell them what they can and can't do. Their development comes on that side. We are very much available to work with businesses that come to us. We're a very friendly business organization, business, we encourage them to come to our community on a regular basis, and we, as a matter of fact, like we said, we just opened a brand-new daycare center that's here in Hugo, and we are attracting businesses, it just takes time, and a lot of it's just the economy.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to question number four, and you'll be, oh, sorry, I missed that.
Yes.
You can have 30 seconds.
Yes, I do have a follow-up on that. So, we have seen that retail development on that side of Elmcrest, but we haven't seen it over here. Now, I've been knocking doors, talking to constituents, and the daycare's great, people want a drugstore with reasonable hours, people want more shopping options, people want other places to eat, and none of that has been done for as long as I've lived here.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Pat, if I may?
Yes.
Diane, thank you. Well, we, as a matter of fact, there's been opportunities for drugstores to look at in our community, to look at themselves there, but there wasn't the property available to do it. You've got to have property owners that are willing to step forward and allow developers to develop that property, and unless that happens, it's not going to happen. And the other thing is, you've got to be able to have the financial resources to get it done, and it has, the economy has to be in a position that is able to do so. 2008, the economy went, didn't do very well, it just came out of a pandemic, so that's where we're at, and that's what we've been fighting.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, what skills and experience do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be a city council member in Hugo?
I've been, like I said, I was on the city council for 16 years. I've been dealing with solar farms, I've been dealing with rock reconstruction park projects throughout the year, but I also sit on Metro Area Water Supply Commission. I deal with water policies to ensure that our policies are to the advantage of our cities and citizens in Hugo. I also sit on the land use advisory committee at the Met Council to watch over how the land uses are being developed. We have a comprehensive plan that we follow, and I want to make certain that we are able to stay within those rules and regulations, but also to make certain that the rules and regulations actually help us as a community.
Thank you. Mr. Krull.
Yes, Diane, as I said in my opening, I did operate a nuclear power plant for 10 years, and as you can imagine, the regulations are strict, and the way that you have to operate is spelled out through the operating license and various federal codes, and I understand how those were made and how they are to be followed. So I do have experience following the rules. I've also volunteered on boards and voted with members oftentimes when things got contentious, so I've done that. I would pose to you that 16 years is a long time to be in a position, and it might be time to have a new approach to how Hugo is run.
Yes, a rebuttal.
Yeah, well, 16 years is worth a lot because I've been able to develop relationships not only on a local level, but also on a regional level and actually on a state level. And so that gives us some credence as far as trying to get things done and being able to meet the people that we need to meet, that make the decisions, that have a direct influence on our community. So I think it's very important to understand that I do understand what it takes to get the job done, and that's why I'm running for this office. I think it's important that we have a great community in Hugo, I want the city to continue to be a great community.
Thank you. Okay, for the next question, Mr. Krull, you're first. The vast majority of the city of Hugo is in the Rice Creek watershed district. What are your views of the impact of the district's work in Ward 2? What ideas do you have to improve cooperation between the city and the watershed district?
I'll be honest, I haven't looked at that topic in depth, but obviously, opening lines of communication, talking with the voting members of the watershed district, and coming to a consensus that best represents the needs of the constituents in Ward 2.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Klein.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, one of the things that we talked about a little earlier is because being able to have the experience of 16 years and been able to know people who know how to get things done. John Waller is a gentleman that represents us on the watershed, the Rice Creek watershed district, and worked with him to get the ditches cleaned out that we'd been waiting for for 40 years, which finally got accomplished, and it's thanks to John, through our connection through him, that we were able to get that accomplished. So that's been a huge deal for us because in the city of Hugo, we have to have drainage. Our problem is not enough water, we have too much, and we got to be able to have these ditches drained so we can access our property and be able to do the development that we need to develop.
Thank you. All right, question six, and you'll be first, candidate Klein. The city has taken several pauses to consider new development of solar energy farms. What are your thoughts on how the issue should be resolved?
That's a question that we're still talking about. We are going to have a meeting here within the next couple of weeks to discuss that ordinance that we have on solar farms. I had recommended that, currently, if you're on a 10-acre property, you're able to put in a five-acre solar farm. I think we should try to increase that to 20 acres and get that out of the 10-acre slot, if you will. There's a lot of 10-acre parcels that we could try to help avoid some of that. 20 acres, I think, makes more, is more reasonable, and I think that the property owner has an opportunity, should be able to do what they want on their property. And there are individuals out there who are relying on some of these solar farms to provide them income when they're in retirement. Why should they not be able to do that? They are, most of these folks are dairy farmers or farmers at one time, and they should be able to have the opportunity to do that. Just because you don't like to see a solar farm doesn't, doesn't allow you not, not allow the other property owners to have to develop. You know, you're not paying, you're not paying for the sites. Somebody has to pay taxes on that, and landowners that have solar farms have to pay taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Krull.
Yes. Last week, I did attend a joint meeting between the planning commission and the city council on this issue, and that's where the 20 acres was discussed, and I think that is a wonderful idea. What was also discussed at that meeting was that it's disappointing, the developers spend so much time and money developing a site, and then the public is against it, the city council gets yelled at, and money is wasted when the project doesn't go through. On a break, I pulled the mayor aside and said, "The way that you correct that is you let people know what's coming." The resistance might not be to the solar farm, it's to the fact that you get a card a week before saying, "A solar farm is being considered here," and then you go to city council and find out it's been in the works for months and months and months. That's where people get upset, and that's where we come back to transparency. People need to know what's going on so they have time to accept or challenge what we want to do.
Thank you. Yes, a rebuttal.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, where Mr. Krull was talking about, that was actually in Everton Avenue, and that's what, the avenue that he lives on, that solar farm that he's talking about. I actually met with Mr. Krull as well as his neighbors. Is that correct, right? I did meet with you? And we had the conversation, that, there was notices out on that solar farm meetings and what was going on in that project months before this even came down, and when the decision was finally made, the residents in that area were not for the solar farm, and it didn't make sense because for them, it did not fit the character of the area. So we've, and I voted for that, that we not have solar farms.
Thank you. A rebuttal.
Yes, I will say this, Phil, when we called him, he did step up. All the council members came out and met with us, but we did not get notice, and I'll tell you, I've lived in Hugo for 10 years, and the first time I met Phil was when I called him and said, "I have an issue." That is reactive, and that's fine, you did what you were supposed to do, you reacted to your constituents. What I am pushing for is proactive, proactive council work, where you engage people before the problem exists, not after.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Diane?
Is that your third card?
That's my second.
Okay. Oh, you had a rebuttal for this question already.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can't.
Very well, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So moving on to question number seven, and Mr. Krull, you'll be first. As a city council member, how will you encourage citizen input and feedback? How will you inform Hugo residents about city council actions and decisions?
Thank you, Diane, that's a great question. I do have that detailed on my campaign website. I plan to do a constituent newsletter, I plan to do summary council meeting videos that are short, three to five minutes, telling people what happened at the city council. You can watch the videos, as Phil said, those are typically an hour long, an hour and a half. A lot of people don't have time for that, so I'm going to do summary videos, and I'm going to do monthly constituent meetings if I can get people to come. I want to do that in the Onico room every month where I can hear people's concerns, we can talk about what's coming before the council, and we can really drive getting people involved in their local government.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Yeah, we're still going to, as far as I'm concerned, we're going to still continue to keep doing what we've been doing. We have always put notices out ahead of time, it's in the newspaper, it's on the website, folks can visit it anytime they want to. If they want to contact me, they have the ability to contact me at any time. My information, contact information, is on the city website. Meeting people on a regular basis, I do that all the time. I'm in the community, I mean, I've been approached at grocery stores, I've been approached at the post office. My wife gets frustrated with me because I end up spending a half hour there instead of sending a couple minutes. That happens all the time. I don't have a problem with that, I'm always available to be, talk to anyone about anything. And trying to let people know ahead of time, having meetings, good luck, because folks are busy, you know, and trying to even have a city council meeting, we don't have a lot of folks that come in that are really concerned unless it actually starts affecting them in their particular area where they're living. And I'm always open, as a matter of fact, our council has always been very open to having individuals give their responses. We're always looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you're first on this one, Mr. Klein. Where do you see people struggling in your community? As a city council member, what would you do to address those struggles?
I think our, the biggest struggle I think I'm seeing right now is housing. I'm really concerned with that. We're trying, we're growing our community, but try to find housing that's affordable for anyone, it's becoming extremely difficult. What we're trying, I'm working with landowners and developers to try to get more housing into our community that's more affordable. And we've taken, we've taken, I've taken an opportunity to try to have more units per acre so we can have hopefully lower reductions in the cost of housing, so we can reduce the cost of the developers so they can get more money and, you know, spread their, spread their cost over a large number of units. Unfortunately, what we're seeing is, is we do have that happen, but the price doesn't go down, it just keeps, it stays the same or it keeps going up, and that's the market conditions that we're dealing with. Housing is a tough animal, it's a tough nut to crack, and we're working on it, it's just the economic reality of it is, this is a free-market economy. It is what it is. We're trying.
Thank you. Mr. Krull.
Yes, I have spent the past four weeks talking with constituents, and the main issues I'm hearing are about property taxes and HOA fees. From the top property tax standpoint, bringing those businesses in is critical to bringing more money into the community. From an HOA fee standpoint, the council is currently revising zoning standards. That meeting was held last week, and I think we could really put some developers' feet to the fire and try to get some relief for people that are really paying a lot for where they live.
Diane, if I may, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Diane, when it comes to HOA fees, the HOA is responsible for that, that's a separate business. We, as a city, do not have any control over that, and that has to do with the HOA board and the citizens that live within that HOA area. We do our best with the developers to try to work with them in paying for the infrastructure, and have to pay for the land, and we work with them to try to make that affordable as much as possible for local residents. We want to see individuals trying to move into our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to use my last rebuttal on that one. Many of the communities that I operated in had rental licensing programs and other programs to ensure responsible operation of rental units and other housing. Hugo could certainly look at that if the fees are becoming too high for people to afford. There are ways to rein them in, they need to be examined. I'm hearing a lot today about doing the things the way we've always done them, we need to look at new solutions to these problems.
Thank you. This one, you will be first, Mr. Krull. What do you believe the city council should do to ensure businesses thrive in your community?
My opinion on business is that government should provide wide guide rails and let businesses solve the majority of their problems. We are there to support business and drive the will of our constituents, but as far as business growth, we need to get out of the way. We need to make things easy for business to come in and easy for them to thrive.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Klein.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. Yeah, actually, in the city of Hugo, we're very business-friendly. We've been, you can talk to any businesses, we've been very open. We have a business retention and expansion program that we've been working with, with the Washington County CDA, and that encourages business owners to expand their business. We provide training, educational opportunities, there's even some loan opportunities, grant opportunities that they can access for expansion of their, of their business. The other thing is having decent, having well-maintained infrastructure that can, that we can make certain that we can get to and from their businesses, and they can get their products in and out of their manufacturing facilities. Schweeters is one example, and Wilson Tools another.
Thank you. The next question, and Mr. Klein. What steps will you take to ensure financial transparency and accountability in city government?
We have an, we have an audit on an annual basis, and we've always been, thanks to our auditing, or actually, thanks to our accounting department, they do an excellent job. That's transparent, you can come in at any time, ask for a report, we'll more than happy to give that to you. The audits have been, we've always been at a top rating as far as we are going through the audits. We just, we just do a good job overall. I don't, if anyone has any questions, you know, I'd be more than happy to sit down with them and we can review it. We maintain, we're very conservative, we have a budgeting program, it's called contingency budgeting, where we plan ahead, if we're going to buy a piece of equipment, we put money aside on an annual basis, and once that time comes to purchase that piece of equipment, we can buy it with cash without borrowing, and that's huge because that means we don't have to pay extra interest on additional borrowing, and because of that, we get a double A rating that's very favorable as far as the credit rating is looking for.
Thank you. Mr. Krull.
Yes, I plan to publish those budgets, and one thing that I found interesting, now that I've been attending the meetings, and I've talked with many constituents about this, and most people don't understand it, is that the city council is paid on a per-meeting basis, and that seems very untransparent to me because you'll sit and watch a city council meeting, and they'll talk about all these other meetings that they're going to do, and you say, "Wow, they're working very hard for us, they're doing a lot of work," but what you come to realize is, each of those meetings is a payment to the council. I actually was at a council meeting where somebody asked if going to a birthday party of someone turning 100 was a meeting, and I was disappointed to hear that. I don't think that's transparent. I think that's making money for going to a birthday party. That's constituent outreach, and it should not be paid.
Diane.
All right.
Mayth, thank you. Yeah, when it comes to being paid, I'll tell you what, we make $100 per meeting, and as a matter of fact, no one went to the 100th anniversary because nobody, they couldn't make it, so nobody went. And the other thing is, he's a World War II veteran, so I don't know if that's a problem or not, it shouldn't be. Secondly, last year, I made $4,900. That means that for $100, I made, I made 49 meetings, but that doesn't include the metropolitan, I work on the land use advisory committee, that's three or four hours. I got the Metro Area Water Supply Commission, that's two or three hours. I got the land use advisory committee, and I got other various committees that I report to and have to attend, and I don't get paid for that, and I still have to pay taxes and all of it. So I ended up getting, it comes out to about $12.75 per hour to get this, to do this job.
to do this job. I'm not doing this for funds and games, I'm doing it because I want to see a great community in our community.
You just stop.
In Hugo, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Those are all of the questions, so we will move on to closing statements. And for this, Mr. Kroll, you will be first for your closing statement of one minute.
I just want to start by saying thank you to the Legal Women Voters for holding this and asking these thoughtful questions. It's been a great opportunity to get my ideas out in front of people as an unknown, first-time candidate, so I appreciate that. Time and dedication, time and desire, that's what it's going to take to drive change, and that's what I'm here for. I have time to do it, I have the desire to see it change. Phil has done this for 16 years, great job, good on you, I appreciate it. I think it's time for something new. Another thing I heard at that meeting, and I heard it today, you can't make people care. People are too busy. That is a calcification of the current council. Because people haven't come in the past, they won't come in the future. We're not going to try. Well, I am going to try, and I'm going to get people involved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Diane. Yeah, again, just as I said in my opening statement, you know, there's three things that really are most important. That is, number one, we have to focus on our water usage, being able to get communities, get water so we can grow our community. Secondly is to look at housing. That's extremely important, to work with landowners and property owners, or, excuse me, landowners and developers to try to get more affordable housing into our community. And then thirdly is to have fiscal responsibility. And I'm always open for new change, new ideas, and if you ever want to contact me, you're always available to do so. We are a growing community, we have to be open to change, we have to look at new ideas, and that I am always open to. And I thank you too, as well, for the League for sponsoring this debate, or not debate, but these questions. Thank you very much.[1754.03]